Okay, based on the agenda, can I have a motion to accept... ...a consent agenda? A motion to accept a consent agenda. Janine first, Sarah second, all in favor. And we'll do a brief pause to... We've got so many questions for our new employees and for... Thank you to the board. We'll break up in five minutes.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're...
I'll be over here.
We're on, so you can go into exact... Katie, we leave now too.
If we want to go into executive session, can I have a motion? Janine first, Shannon second, all in favor? Thank you.
It's not for you, please.
And leave me?
Yeah, no.
On our agenda, we are going to go to our personnel report. And I'm looking for a motion to approve Megan Lampier, regular part-time food service helper salary per the CSEA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025. And second. A motion to approve, all in favor? A motion to approve Susan Murphy, full-time, half-month custodian per salary. Salary per the CSEA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025. Pending fingerprinting. Shannon first, Sarah second. All in favor? Moving down to substitute appointments. A motion to approve Carissa Lyon, long-term substitute first-grade teacher, elementary non-certified from October 31st, 2025 through approximately February 6th, 2026. Salary per the district approved rate sheet effective October 15th, 2025. Janine first, Sarah second. All in favor? A motion to approve Joyce Visconti, substitute for food service helpers, salary per the district approved rate sheet and the CSEA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025. Shannon first, Janine second. All in favor? A motion to approve Linda DeMalta, substitute food service helper, salary per the district approved rate sheet and the CSEA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025. Ed first, Janine second. All in favor? And a motion to approve Andrea Renunden? Is that her name? Substitute food service helper salary per the district approved rate sheet and the CSEA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025. Sarah first at second. All in favor? Moving down to winter coaching appointments. A motion to approve Jayce Healy, head coach, boys varsity basketball, step four of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 2025-26 school year. Ed first, Janine second. All in favor? Todd Hoben, head coach, boys modified basketball for seventh and eighth grade, step five of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Ed first, Shannon second. All in favor? Teresa Senikowski, head coach, girls varsity basketball, step five of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Sarah first, Shannon second. All in favor? Thank you. Shelley Hazard, volunteer assistant, girls varsity basketball, effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Shannon first, Janine second. All in favor? Kaylin Fitzsimons, volunteer assistant, girls varsity basketball, effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Janine first, Shannon second. All in favor? Okay. Whitney Reddington, head coach, girls junior varsity basketball, step five of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Ed first, Shannon second. All in favor? Taylor Butler, volunteer assistant, girls junior varsity basketball, effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Ed first, Sarah second. All in favor? Dustin Cool, head coach, girls modified basketball for seventh and eighth grade, step five of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Shannon first, Ed second. All in favor? Kelly Guthier, head coach, varsity winter competitive cheerleading, step two of the extracurricular index of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Janine first, Ed second. All in favor? Okay. Corey Youngs, head coach, boys bowling, step five of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Janine first, Sarah second. All in favor? Corey Youngs, head coach, girls bowling, step five of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Janine first, Sarah second. All in favor? Okay. Fair and Sarah's, head coach, indoor track, step five of the WCPTA bargaining agreement effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Ed first, Sarah second. All in favor? Okay. And Todd Hoben, volunteer assistant, indoor track, effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Ed first, Shannon second. All in favor? Okay. Kyle Swickie, volunteer assistant, indoor track, effective October 15th, 2025 for the 25-26 school year. Shannon first, Janine second. All in favor? All right. Moving down the agenda. Approving the 2024-25 audit and corrective action plan. A motion to approve? Sarah first, Ed second. All in favor? Okay. Approving the APPRD evaluator. A motion to approve? Janine first, Shannon second. All in favor? Motion to approve the WCV Poland combined bowling team. Janine first. So what?
No more than probably two right now.
Just wondering.
If anything changes all that the word.
No, I just wondered.
I know last year I think it was only one.
One boy, one girl last year. Last year it was one boy, one girl. One graduated last year and the other one is a student or not.
I wish they would do so quickly with us.
Motion to approve? Sarah first at second. All in favor? Thank you. This one here, E?
Yes.
Okay. So we're moving on to next. All right. Next on the agenda, discussion items. Up first is the update on the partial bleacher replacement.
Okay. Then that's some of the gains outside with the new bleachers. If you look down and the sun hits it just right, there's some bubbling on the film that goes over the aluminum. We have been in contacts with warranty work on this. Right now, tentatively, it would be about the second week in November. We want to make sure we're completely done for the fall season. Dan Clayton will come in, they will fix the bleachers. There's another district about an hour and 20 minutes, hour and a half from here that was dealing with the same concern. And it just, it must have been a contaminated batch of aluminum. And when they put that coating over top of it, it didn't adhere to the aluminum. So it is all warranted. It will not cost the district anything extra to get these sections of the bleachers replaced.
Will the potential cold weather affect the repairs?
Well, we'll see. If we get dumped on in early November, then it would get bumped to probably the spring. But we would have to have that in working with our architects and the company that installed the bleachers. So we tried last week in October, but we don't want to take a chance of pulling these and then having to hurry up to get them back so we can utilize them. There's quite a few. And we've noticed this this spring. I kind of want them changed out ASAP because I want to see if it does it again during the winter. We all know winter's not kind up here, you know? And I want to see the bleachers make it through the winter with no issues. Okay. Second on it is, we have to do a first reading of the updated code of conduct and the attendance piece that is included. We've had parents voice concerns related to the code of conduct and a new attendance piece that was included this year. We have seen a difference in the morning tardiness. And just to kind of put in perspective, last year between September 15th and October 10th, we saw 312 tardies unexcused in that timeframe. Kids coming and going. This year, we've seen 114. So we've seen about a 63% for the positive of students being in the building. But yet, we know there's still concerns. We're working through them at an administrative level and at a board level. Two concerns that were brought up was bereavement and for students and that in the original document, there was no tardiness where students are allowed four tardies, one per marking period throughout the year. We are listening. You know, it's open for 30 days for public comment. Please put in public comment. But we've also seen a positive environment in the morning where students are in class, they're here on time, and learning is taking place. But again, please, so it is open for the next 30 days. I can't stress that enough. Please, if you have any public comment, please put it into the board and myself so we can continue to work on this and make sure it's right. Yes?
Is that accessible from the website? Is it?
Public comment? I believe there is a site that's public comment, that's an email address where you can send a public comment, correct?
Right. Public comments to dramo@westcanada.org.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we will read through the comments, we will work through them, and we will mention some of the comments at the next board meeting in November. But again, we did add those two things to this document. Want to hear it. We want to see what we can do, but we do love the fact that we're seeing an increase in students in school on time. The first reading of an update, back in August, we accepted the district safety plan. Well, in late August, the district was notified, and every district across the state was notified about having to revise the district safety plan with DESH's law, which is cardiac arrest. So we had to go in and put in our district safety plan what the district has for AEDs, where they're located. We're very, I'm very thankful that when I look through the list, we have so many staff members trained in AED, first aid and CPR across the district, whether it's our custodial staff, whether it's our elementary teachers, our middle and high school teachers, bus drivers, administrators. We do a training every year. So, and it's voluntary. Like, if teachers want that or the support staff want it, they can take it. So it is very important that we have so many people throughout these walls that are trained. But we had to add this to our district safety plan, which means we had to reopen it. Next month, we can adopt the changes. And again, any time that we do these things, they are open to public comment. So please, dramo@westcanada.org if you have any comments that you would like to present. Solar pilot. Tonight, I'm gonna talk to the board. I was, I was asked for a meeting with Fairfield's supervisor. Fairfield has a proposed solar project that's going into the community or they're in the process of considering it. They have come to us to ask about a pilot. If you don't know what a pilot is, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. They gave me a template, which I shared with the board. This is your standard template for a contract. If we are interested, we would have to opt in because currently we are opted out. We would have to opt in. And the two questions that we would have to work with our legal representation, the board, would be the total proposed pilot payment and how it was that annual pilot going to be allocated between the district and the town. So these are things that if the board is considering this, then I would start having some further conversations. I would actually have the Fairfield supervisor come to our November meeting to have a conversation and put that on the agenda. Is this something that you would like me to at least move to having that meeting where he comes and presents?
I would.
The same as the windmills.
Correct. And they would come and do a presentation. It would be money for the district. But again, I would like them to come and present to you guys more details, you know? And then have-
I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'd like to know what the payment's going to be.
Yeah.
At one time, they said it was only going to be like one time.
It wouldn't be one time. So I think that that's conversation with the top supervisor. So I will set that up for the November board meeting. And we can have those because after that meeting, if you guys want to opt in, we can opt in. I'll do the paperwork and then we'll go from there.
We have something similar with the windmills, right?
Windmills are done in what? Three years or two?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty. So three. Oh, five, five, okay. That's, yeah, that's late. So, yeah. So that would be just something, I will schedule that for November. I'll have him come and do a presentation and then we can make our decisions after that on what our next steps are. Yep. And then Perkimer Bosse's sale of land. Currently, Bosse's, a long time ago, got, I want to say the Illion, what's the?
Remington Elementary.
Remington Elementary. They had purchased Remington from CBA. And there is a soccer field behind Remington that the county has went to Perkimer Bosse's and has requested to buy the land at fair market value and to build a children's center on the land. This would be something that we're putting out there because this would be something the community would have to vote on because we're one of 10 component districts in the Perkimer Bosse's region. Each region would have to have a vote in May whether they could sell the land or not. The land is currently not being utilized and Herkimer County has secured funds for this children's center that would bring a lot of opportunity to the region. So I have sent out information to the board, the PowerPoint presentation with a little more detail. There is details here in the main office. If anybody's interested, I can print off some of those PowerPoint presentations and that way people would be able to walk. Let's see.
We have the tour.
Yep. Any questions on any of those?
I'm unfamiliar with the pilot from the windmills. Is it possible for us to get whatever there is paperwork was?
I can definitely look with Kelly and get you some information on those pilots. So let me just type that in right now. let me just type that in right now. At this time, I would like to, and this is going to be a new segment before we move on in the board meeting, Ms. Gorinchat, I would like to have some input from you and you've been here for, you know, a little over a month in your senior year.
Yes.
How's it going?
Personally, it's going really well. I really enjoy my classes. I took a lot of electives this year, so it's more of future learning that I'm learning, like I'm taking independent living with Mrs. Malin, I'm taking big shop with her as well, I'm taking personal finance, so already had all my main like credit spend that I needed to graduate, so I chose more beneficial courses for me this year, so I really do enjoy that. My day's pretty full, I only have a lunch period every other day, but it is very enjoyable. Ms. Hazard was really wonderful and she lets me eat during passing before gym and come a little bit late to gym, so I still get to eat if I want cafeteria, to go to cafeteria. Yeah, it's been really nice, I'm really enjoying it and I'm excited for senior activities.
Absolutely. Anything in the district you're noticing that you would like to bring to the meeting?
Not really, like I said, with the cell phone policy in the beginning, like the first couple weeks of school, I didn't see many kids in the bathroom, I think less and less, like absences from class, like during the middle of class was happening. I do know, so we had a speaker from First Source come into our personal finance class and she was very impressed with how much we knew and had like known about like credit unions and banks and the differences that we had learned in class that she was kind of like quizzing us on. And Mrs. Goggins said in the past, she's had speakers come as well, but no classes had known as much like right off the bat or participated or like answered all of these questions like correctly as in the past that she's seen, so she was like really blown away. So she thinks like a lot of kids in the past just kind of would like tune the lady out or tune Miss Goggins out when she is teaching and weren't really capturing it, but it was very, a lot of, and not just one person or two people, it was the whole entire classroom that was participating and the speaker from First Source was very impressed with all of us and our knowledge. So that was definitely a change for Miss Goggins at least, yeah.
Nice. So you're of the opinion the cell phone ban is all positive?
I don't think it's all positive per se, but I do think that there's a lot of loopholes to it that kids have already found that makes it a little bit more bearable, that I've noticed. But at least for in the classroom, I think that's a great thing that kids are focused in the classroom. However, like lunch and study halls are different in my personal opinion, but still kids do find loopholes to that, so they kind of get around it sometimes, which is why I think it's caused less issues thus far, because in class they know you'll get caught, but they find loopholes in study halls and lunches and stuff like that. But I think for the most part, while they're in the classroom, which is, was the important thing, that they're focused in these loopholes as long as they're not causing issues like with bowling or anything like that, I think that it's a good thing that it's kind of set in place for classrooms, but can be a little bit more lenient when needed because kids are gonna do what they want to do and there's only so much you can really do legally, but in the classroom, it's definitely needed.
As was intended.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Excuse me. Okay, upcoming announcements, we have Saturday, this Saturday, October eighteenth, homecoming dance from six to nine in the high school gym. Wednesday, October twenty-second is early release for superintendent's half conference day. Also on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth is our annual trunk or treat, it's from four thirty to six. Friday, November seventh is all county one at Dalgeville Central School District, it's for elementary, high school chorus and junior band. Saturday, November eighth is all county concert, three P M. at Dalgeville CSD. Monday, November tenth is our next board event meeting at six P M. Tuesday, November eleventh, venture day, so school and offices will be closed. And Friday and Saturday, November fourteenth and fifteenth, the musical performance disaster and each night's performance will start at seven P M. At this time, we will go to public comments. We welcome public comments that are related to this agenda. We ask that you be respectful of time. We also ask that you state your name and where you live. Please remember you cannot identify specific staff, student personnel or board persons. If you need to address a specific situation, we ask that you contact the superintendent directly. Thank you. Anything online? Nothing online? We have one visitor.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
For those that don't know me, Gregory Lang, I live in Newport. I have two quick topics and it's been a long night for everybody, so I'll try to keep it moving along. I just want to say, Ms. Gorinchat's a very respected and admirable representative of the, of the senior class. I think she does a nice job, so, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. The two topics, one was, actually just kind of came up when I was speaking with Daphne and Kelly, the electric bus mandate by the state. And obviously, it's an issue bigger than West Canada Valley, it's an issue bigger than Herkimer County. Jeremy, from your perspective, is Bozey's doing anything, is there any groundswell of activity regarding that?
So right now, there's been a couple changes. Now the state has put in, you can put in for waiver one and then possibly it's a two-year waiver followed by waiver two, which would be two more years. We're still in the early process because we waited as a district to be put on a preferred list through NYSERTA, because if you're on the preferred list, it costs, the study costs zero dollars, it's picked up to do the list, part of the grants from New York State to cover that cost. And that cost could be elsewhere, I want to say about twenty-five thousand dollars districts were paid. We're finally on the list, so Mr. Ray has been working with NYSERTA to get us that power assessment taken care of, you know, so with that being said, once we have that, we'll know our next step. But really, this isn't, you know, there's some things that you want to jump all in, this is not one of them right now.
I was just gonna say, if, if any of you are familiar with, or if you can look it up, State Senator Mark Walzak from the northern part of our territory-
Yep.
-or the northern part of our state, has written pretty extensively on, on the state electric bus mandate with really some, some creative ideas about, about how to go about pushing back on the state government about it, so I would suggest you, you look at that.
Sorry, we're, this is one of those things too, like, we aren't one of the four power schools, you know, you have Syracuse and you have Buffalo and Albany and they might work in those areas, but our football team went to Tupper Lake. What are we, didn't have a bus parked halfway in the Adirondack Park so they could bring the kids halfway and then get into another bus that's been fully charged to bring them? These are areas that concern me because nights are cold.
Sure.
We go a long distance to play some of these athletic and we don't need kids stranded on the side of the road.
Yeah, I'm in a pilot program now with my company where I have an electric vehicle and for a daily driver, I was telling the ladies out, out in the hallway, for a daily driver, it's fine, and I never saw, I, you know, I'm a meat and potatoes old guy, I never thought I'd have an electric vehicle. I love it, I love it as a daily driver. To do anything that requires like heat, air conditioning or long distances, a pain in the ass and you have to plan out your trip well in advance. Anyway, I, I'm off topic. The real subject I want to talk about was, I wanted to give my five-week update on the Code of Conduct and the attendance policy. And Jeremy, I, Mr. Sid, and I appreciate your, your report and I think that's, those are important numbers and I'm glad to hear that tardiness has improved. So given that, pardon me, where are my readers? So the stated policy, or the, the goal of the policy was two folds, right? It was to improve academic responsibility and maintain integrity of extracurricular involvement. So I'll be interesting to see as we go forward, how those goals are measured and how we do against them. Here's my report. So I had an opportunity to speak with a senior cheerleader, the first home game, and she was here and she wasn't in her cheerleading uniform. And I said, what's up? And she said, I was two minutes late today, so I can't participate. I thought, you know what, technically, that's correct, but that certainly isn't the spirit of what we're trying to do. I'll just let that marinate. Tomorrow, I have to make a special trip to get a note from a Northropede's, my grandson was injured in a football game, he had to leave school and go to his appointment. Heather contacted, the office contacted me and said, hey, you need this note, otherwise it's going to be marked as tardy, absent, whatever it is. I said, okay, well, that's a pain in the neck and I'm glad I have the flexibility in my schedule to do that. Some folks don't, some folks have to be in a job, in a building, and on a factory floor or whatever they're doing and just can't make that happen. Pain in the neck. Then I thought, well, wait a minute, at the beginning of the school year, volumes of paper come home and students and parents and guardians all sign off on these things and say, hey, I, I agree that, you know, we'll abide by this policy and that policy and I give up my rights where the, the coaches can administer first aid to my child, my child can ride home with A, B and C. So I thought, well, if that's good enough for us to be able to accept an attestation by the parent or the guardian that those are acceptable, then why wouldn't it be acceptable for me to attest to the fact that my child, or in this case, my grandchild, was at an appointment? Again, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm, I'm telling you my perspective on it, okay? Two more points. It's my understanding that each day, a list is put out, which would contain names of students who are absent, tardy on some type of list for not being able to participate. I believe that to be true. My guess is, and I think this is probably accurate, that even though we now have a really good, a really significant improvement in tardiness, that the same names are probably showing up on that list pretty frequently. Not asking for a comment, certainly not talking about any people, anyone in particular, but if that's the case, and I think it is, is that a missed opportunity, or is that an opportunity to not miss a chance to counsel those kids to find out why, what's going on? Or maybe they have been counseled, maybe their teachers have talked to them, maybe guidance has, maybe the administration has, maybe the parents have been called in. I certainly hope that we don't miss that opportunity to say, you know what, Johnny, fictitious thing, shows up, you know, four days a week on this list, well, we've got to look in and see what's going on with Johnny. Last point. I, I think the one-size-all approach just doesn't work in education. We have administrator, administration that, you know, you hold advanced degrees in two, really in two specific areas, one in educational vision and one in temperament. And what I see being applied in this case is neither temperament, certainly not temperament, or really much vision. I, I think the attendance policy is more punitive than, than we want to admit. I said my piece. I look forward to emailing dramo@westcanada.org and I hope others do as well with, with all kinds of comments, both positive and negative. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments? Okay. A motion to adjourn? At first, Janine second, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too now. Katie, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all.